Good evening.
Trustee Graham Hudek.
Good evening.
Good evening. Call for a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
So move.
Second.
Those in favor of supporting the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We have one item on the agenda tonight. The Technology Committee has a brief findings report which will be presented by Tim Foss and Kristen Thomas. That being said, welcome Tim and Kristen, and when you're ready, we're ready.
All right, we're going to start with an audio clip to set the tone.
Okay. Five points.
Oh, I thought you were going to show something, too.
No, no, just audio. Just audio. We would have had to get releases and all kinds of rights in order to probably show anything. Yeah, so Kristen and I are going to take you through just a summary of the findings from the Technology Committee meeting that was held back on September the 6th. And just a few notes before we start on the slides. Really, this was kind of Anne Marie's suggestion shortly after coming onto the board was to stand up some kind of an ad hoc committee, which was done. We had Dick Carlisle, a professional facilitator, come in to actually run that meeting. We also, in advance of the meeting, boarded what I think were four different questions, which we had hoped to kind of solicit input from a group of about sixty-some-odd individuals from around the community who have some knowledge or interest in connected and autonomous vehicles. One thing that we did learn after Kristen and I compiled or synthesized all the results was, well, maybe the priorities that we thought the group would have had are a little bit different than what they actually listed. So that was a good exercise in itself to realize that maybe the private sector thinking behind connected and autonomous vehicles is not absolutely aligned with how government might be thinking about the impact of these. So...
Certainly, what I'd like to do is at the end, please do take copious notes, and then they'll have public comment, and we'll have open discussion. So I will make a call for comments and questions, and we'll address everything you have. And it's a fairly brief presentation tonight, so about fourteen slides. Okay, please make the notes, and we'll circle back to it all.
Perfect. So in looking at the comments that we received, we divide them up into kind of three buckets of ideas. Some ideas that we felt were kind of internally driven, these are things that the municipal staff will take on over time. The second group were the industry and public-driven. A lot of those are really kind of outside of Canton's control, but definitely we will continue to monitor those as connected and autonomous vehicles evolve. And then third, just a list of miscellaneous, and this was where there was quite a few more comments generally at the session than we had anticipated. So since that time, we have presented this information. It's been sent out to the individuals that attended the September 6th meeting, Committee Meeting, and we have since presented this information also at a SEMCOG meeting out at Cranbrook Institute a number of months back on behalf of SEMCOG. So we're going to just take you through these. I'm going to talk on the internal-driven ones first, and then turn it over to Kristen, and then kind of come back and wrap it up with the miscellaneous. So if you see any bullet on here that's highlighted in yellow, these are bullets that we're committing to take on in the short term, like over the next, say, six to twelve months. These are our items that we're actively going to work on. Not to say we won't address some of the other things that are on here eventually, but we had to really kind of pick some priorities. So the very first set of internal-driven ideas were to improve traffic safety and reduce traffic congestion. We've committed to look into improving lanes and traffic signs as well as the traffic signals as the connected and autonomous vehicle technology evolves. One caveat that I'll put with this now, and I think the board certainly understands that, is Canton does not own, Canton does not operate, a single traffic signal within the community. Every traffic signal within our community is one of either an M dot traffic signal or a Wayne County traffic signal. I think the split is there's about twenty-five that are under the Michigan Department of Transportation's jurisdiction, and then another forty-five that are Wayne County's jurisdiction. But that doesn't mean we won't work with those agencies to try to advance these issues. Couple other ideas that emerged, which we're not going to tackle now, but perhaps down the road, would be to collect information on community transit patterns, utilize some of the data, potentially partnering with Google, Waze, or one of the other companies that's collecting what they call crowdsourced data off of equipment that is out there along the right-of-ways throughout southeast Michigan. And then third, planning and ordinance for safety concerns. This is kind of addressed a little bit later, so we will talk about that, and we did include it on a further slide. The second item, though, that we have agreed to kind of take on would be to make our commercial areas more accessible by opening backroads or interior roads between parcels. So we have actually been working on this since 2004. This has been a very focused thing that the township has been doing along Ford Road in particular. We've done a little bit of it along Michigan Avenue, but it's really, this is kind of a Ford Road issue, trying to, you know, reduce the number of turns and reduce traffic impacts along busy corridors such as Ford by opening up, if you will, east-west roads in behind the businesses. As you know, there's one between Lily Road and Hagerty Road generally, you know, in behind IKEA, and the other shopping centers that takes you out to Lily Road on the west side. There's also one between Morton Taylor and Sheldon. We would like to explore more of those, certainly as part of our access management plan, and we do think that that's a good idea. Second topic that came up under internal-driven was reducing parking requirements. We don't see the need to do that at this time, and I'll just share with you one thought. If you think about the fact that we just approved permitted, and then the developer constructed the new Art Van store on Ford Road, Canton has one of the most restrictive, that is, the highest number of parking spaces required per development of any community in southeast Michigan. That was something done very purposeful twenty, twenty-five years ago, was to keep a high requirement on the number of parking spaces because there was a lot of complaints at that time about available parking at commercial businesses. Now, the reality is, connected and autonomous vehicles may in fact reduce the amount of parking required in the future. Some studies suggest that that, you know, could be as high as thirty-five percent, fewer parking spaces required, but there'll be additional paved areas around buildings that are going to be required for drop-off, where these connected vehicles that aren't actually going to park, but they're going to deliver you to the Art Van store and then take you away when you're done shopping. So Art Van, under our ordinance requirements, needed to construct one hundred and eleven parking spots, and we told them that when they were going through their review. They came back to us and said, "That's too few. We refuse to construct the minimum. We want one hundred and fifty-three parking spots." So our ordinance sets a minimum standard. If the business, through their business plans and their traffic analyses, feels that they want to construct additional spots, then we will allow them to do so where those numbers are reasonable. So the reason I bring Art Van up is it's a brand-new building in our community. I hope it'll be there a very long time. These builds are typically forty, fifty-year assets, and we just built one. So, you know, it's new to the community. Should we have forced them to put in less parking right now? I think, speaking very frankly today, the answer is no. I think we want to see what's going to come with connected and autonomous vehicles, and when the right time is to consider reducing our parking requirements. So that's kind of one for the future. The reality, too, is that, as I mentioned, the existing parking lot, well, it may have quite a few parking spaces. It can be reconfigured in the future so that maybe some of the parking spaces are used for drop-off areas. So this is just kind of some of our internal thinking on it at this point, so that one is kind of parked out into the future for us. Exploring transportation alternatives, there's a couple here that we'd like to tackle, certainly to have alternative paths for getting throughout the community. I think that sits pretty high on the board's set of board goals that were just recently developed, and likewise to invest in connecting sidewalks and pathways for a walkable community. You're seeing us try to push that with some of the development community now. We saw it with the recent land use changes for Michigan Avenue between Sheldon and Morton Taylor Road. You know, these are examples where we're going to try to kind of push the development community towards more walkable designs in the future. Few other points here, an AV-friendly community is a pedestrian-friendly area, sorry, you know, sure, I buy that, but there's really nothing that we need to take action on on that bullet. There was a suggestion to identify a popular route, and I think in fact the suggestion was to buy maybe three or four autonomous vehicles, the township do that, and begin running a shuttle up and down that route of some kind. I don't, you know, the township's not ready to do that at this point in time. I think frankly, nor is really maybe the industry. And then there was just a comment made about the M1 line in Detroit and the need to have a trolley line somewhere in Canton Township, and there's kind of one in the same with that previous bullet. An additional goal was to explore additional mobility services, especially for seniors with the emphasis there. One of the things in connected and autonomous vehicles that's coming is improved or enhanced mobility services. Right now, the township offers mobility services to seniors sixty-two years of age and older and the disabled for what otherwise is kind of like an eight-to-five day shift, Monday through Fridays, and they can get rides for medical appointments and other reasons around the community based on priority through the Canton Mobility Transportation Program. What we envision on this front is an increased number of services in this arena in the future, where there might be smaller operators set up to run what they call micro-transit, which are kind of smaller shuttles that deliver you shorter distances in order to pick up other forms of transportation. So if you want to go over to Westland and pick up the Smart Bus to go into downtown Detroit, you might be able to take a little micro-transit bus with two or three other people and go over to the city of Wayne and pick up that ride. Or if you want to go pick up a train or some, or, you know, maybe even as far potentially as Metro Airport, but typically, these are fairly short trips. But we definitely see that happening in Canton Township and in more suburban areas like Canton, probably across the metro area. The other point that was driven home was we need to consider the budget implications of all of this stuff, because, you know, there's, again, A, we have some limited responsibilities for some of this infrastructure, and B, we always got to be cognizant of how we spend the public dollars. But the reality is, we probably need to think about budgeting for connectivity somewhere in the community. One example I would give is seven, maybe eight years ago, the DDA did a major project to bury all the electrical underground lines along Ford Road. When that project was done, we asked the designers to put some additional conduits in the underground duct banks along Ford Road, just in case in the future we might need some other form of communication line. So that was done, those duct banks exist, that capital investment's been made. If we needed or wanted to pull fiber optic lines through those conduits, that would be a possibility in order to connect traffic signals and other signal infrastructure along the Ford Road corridor. So there is some opportunities there, and, for example, installing fiber, as the board knows, is something that we've done before, and it's, we did it in partnership with the school district, and it was relatively inexpensive in the greater scheme of things. Few other points made, that we just need to be cautious with the capital expenditures, a suggestion to add rental lockers as a source of revenue, investing in mapping throughout the township, focusing on driving more revenue, and then again, revenue generation versus reduction. A little bit of this discussion point was around, you know, if there's going to be a number of kind of outdated, non-connected, non-autonomous vehicles out there that are still in decent condition, is there a way somehow we, I don't know if that really means Canton itself or the community, can somehow make money on the sale of those vehicles? But those were just a few of the ideas that were kind of thrown around. So I'm going to turn it over to Kristen, and she'll talk a little bit about the industry and kind of public-driven stuff, and then I'll take it back and wrap it up.
Okay, so when this first came about, we were thinking, what can Canton do for the technology autonomous vehicle idea? And one thing we can do is with M City over in Ann Arbor and ACM at Willow Run, we thought, well, let's try to get in on the synergy being created to the west of us, right? So Michigan Avenue would be a great place to, for some of these technology companies to maybe locate between 275 and where they need to go, and we've got our Michigan Avenue corridor, so this is something that we can maybe tap into. So what I've been doing on that front is kind of researching where I could put myself in front of some of these companies. So a lot of the autonomous vehicle trade shows are in China and Berlin, and that's just not in my budget to go over there. But there are a couple coming to Detroit this year that I'm going to look into attending to just kind of talk to the companies, see what kind of space they might need, see if I can hook them up with developers in the community to try to get them here, and then they'll bring their employees here, and then they'll buy houses here, and then everybody's happy, right? Another comment was develop the Canton Center Denton Cherry Hill Village area. More homes are coming there, businesses will come there. Don't know where that exactly figures into the economic development technology side. Of course, we want businesses to come to that area. Be a welcoming community to advanced tech organizations and firms. We try to be welcoming to all businesses, and we just need to find the right fit for these places. That's why I want to get in front of some of them at these trade shows to see what exactly it is they're looking for, what kind of office space do they need, what kind of warehouse space do they need? What do they need? What do we have? What can we provide for them as a community? I know we have... Through, so we have the skill sets required. We have the people living in Canton who can work at these companies. So that needs to be part of my package to these companies. I need to present them with the kind of space they might be looking for. I need to present them with the demographics that we already have here in Canton, not just the people, but the other businesses, the other companies that are already doing some of this work right here in Canton, to let them know of the resources that we already have here. Tax incentives. The state has tax incentives for high-tech manufacturing industries, and Canton historically has been very supportive of those when businesses come in, when they've, their investment in the community, their staffing, how many people are they going to hire? We've been very, very generous with those tax incentives. We can go up to a twelve-year, fifty percent abatement on their taxes, and depending on their staffing and investment, and I think that that would be no different here with this industry. We like to see jobs coming to Canton and investment in our community. So I believe we can still, I can still confidently put that on the table to companies who might be interested in Canton. We always try to provide a business-friendly environment, again, trying to put the right companies with the right developers. We've got a person who owns a hundred acres out there at Michigan and Beck, who's just looking for some tenants. He wants to build some big buildings, and I think it's a good time for him with ACM, M City. I think it's all going to be coming together soon. The second, this other part is more of a communications idea, educating the community through videos and seminars to embrace these technologies and gather input. Tim will be talking in a few minutes about some input that we just recently acquired. And as all of this new technology becomes available and may be integrated into the community, we do want to let the residents know, hey, this is what's coming, and here's how it can benefit you, and here's what Canton is doing, and here's how you might want to get involved, or we can have, we can put videos on our website, we can hold seminars, we can do whatever it is our residents might be asking for to learn about and embrace these technologies. And I think, I'll let you talk about the information we just gathered. But anyway, we want our residents to be involved as we move along. One of the comments was that we should work with public safety to make the community more friendly to CAV, and that's something we can certainly work on with our public safety, is they need to be ready for these vehicles, too, right? In case, like in Las Vegas, the first day on the job, the autonomous bus crashed. So through no fault of that bus's own, it was the other guy's fault. But what does public safety do when that happens? Are they prepared to handle this stuff? So we need to let these companies feel comfortable that we know how to handle situations. And again, what do residents want? We want to do some surveys, we want to get feedback from them as much as possible as the technology emerges, and what do they want to see, what do they want us to try to do?
So then there was the category of everything else. And what emerged from this was a couple suggestions. One, you know, we should, Canton should learn from what others are already doing. Ann Arbor is doing some work with connected and autonomous vehicles already and have been for some time. As Kristen noted, the M City site is, you know, has been in the city of Ann Arbor for a while now. The American Center for Mobility is kind of right between us and Ann Arbor, so we think we're well-positioned to learn from both of those. But I think who will probably learn the most from is Oakland County, who are definitely a leader in the connected and autonomous vehicles front, at least from a government standpoint. So Oakland County presented at the thing, at the workshop that we did with SEMCOG out at Cranbrook Institute, and I presented on what we're doing at a local level, Oakland County presented on what the county's doing at the county level, and then the Center for Automotive Research presented more kind of on a national, state-national perspective. But Oakland County has issued a request for proposals. It was issued back, I think, in November with a deadline of January the 9th, and that proposal is to have companies bid on constructing a live-operating, connected and autonomous vehicle kind of corridor throughout the county. So the county has over two thousand signalized intersections, and this pilot project will be for ten intersections along Squirrel Road. If you know the Oakland University campus at all, it's basically from M 59 north up to Dutton Road, and then Dutton Road east, sorry, west, to Brown Road, and then Brown Road over back towards I 75. So they're going to have companies bid on constructing and operating this system for a period of time in order to do a real kind of live pilot project to establish some technical criteria for the other nineteen-hundred-and-ninety intersections in the county. And they are, you know, they've been working on this for three years. The county executives' charge to this task force is to do it and have it not cost Oakland County any money. So be interesting to see how this proposal evolves, but the proposals have been extended now until February the 8th, and our contact there has indicated that they will share any and all information with us as soon as it's received and they have a recommendation, and they're very willing to kind of help Canton out even in moving forward. So I think that was great. Installing electrical vehicle charging stations, we've had a number of applications over the last ten years propose installing these throughout the community. All of them were tied to grant funding. None of the individuals got grants, none of the projects moved forward. But it's going to happen. Is that, you know, the role of the township, or is that the role of the private sector? That's kind of, I think, really the question right now, because for the most part, these are likely going to be on private property, so I think you know where my thinking is on it. Becoming the next test bed, you know, sure, if that's an opportunity, then we'll explore it, but we would definitely commit to the learning and commit to developing any policies that would support connected and autonomous vehicles in the future. Again, on miscellaneous things that we would consider tackling would be studying cities that have had autonomous vehicles operating in their streets for many years. This is probably a little bit more of a long-term goal, and learn from, you know, the lessons that they've learned over time. And then also balancing about the suburban and urban implications of connected and autonomous vehicles, because this means something different for Canton than it means for a large urban center. As I mentioned, I would envision more of this micro-transit type of applications in the community. I think that's definitely something very workable for suburban locations, and, you know, rethinking our parking and rethinking how drop-off and pickup of users in the future should be figured out on existing and new commercial construction sites. So those are definitely some things that we can work on. Last couple of slides that we have here, you know, being cognizant of the surrounding communities so that we don't become an island of technology. I guess, you know, we just always need to be aware that we're not in this alone, that this is more than even regional, this is, you know, this is state, this is nationwide, and we can't be doing something substantially different than, you know, what other communities are doing, but we can be doing it faster and earlier than some of these other communities, certainly. Because, you know, transit... Because, you know, transit, transit, you know, transcends these geographical boundaries that we call the community lines. So, so we need to be thinking regionally in terms of these, these solutions. Public safety training, Kristin hit on that earlier, that there may be, there may be a need to do some training for our police officers and our emergency responders and how they're responding to electric vehicles that are perhaps involved with accidents or disabled. And then, you know, police officers and how they're going to deal with any potential infractions that happen when somebody's in a, in a connected or autonomous vehicle. And then to become CAV-friendly, again, Kristin mentioned, we're, we're absolutely on board to, to do that. So we've outlined a few proposed next steps. The first of which is we've completed the synthesis of the notes. And you're being presented those with, with those tonight. Working with MDOT in Wayne County on a strategy to, to tackle some of these goals. I handed out a, a sheet tonight, which is a, a drawing from MDOT that shows Michigan Avenue. And it shows the American Center for Mobility down in that red square on the left side of that drawing in Ypsilanti Township. And it shows a bunch of dots along Michigan Avenue with call-out lines and bubbles with a bunch of technical information in those bubbles. And what it all means is wherever those dots are located in Canton Township along Michigan Avenue, generally between I-275 and Ypsilanti Township, there's, I'd say, you know, about 10 traffic signals along that stretch. And MDOT is going to install these dedicated short-range communication devices over the next couple of years along that corridor. So what that'll allow MDOT to do is to tie that equipment into the ACM, be able to tie it into I-94, tie it into I-275, all the way up to I-96 in Oakland County out towards US-23. So it would be a kind of mid-level arterial highway through the community that ties to the urban freeway system that already has a bunch of this equipment installed on it. The other thing that is not shown on that drawing, but is going to happen later this year is an upgrade of the existing dedicated short-range communication devices along I-275. Couple of years ago, when MDOT reeded 275 between 696 and 96, they put all new equipment in. They're going to match the section from I-96 down to I-94, in fact, a little bit south of 94 this coming year, and get all that equipment upgraded. So it's the latest and the greatest. And I'll show you a picture of what that type of equipment looks like in a second. So, you know, we're working with MDOT on that and that's positive news. Where I think there's maybe a play down the road for us with Ford Road is, you know, maybe we could also put this equipment on Ford Road, maybe utilize that existing conduit bank that was put in about seven years ago by the DDA for the communications between these devices and tie that into I-275. Then we just need to make the link down Canton Center Road from Ford and Canton Center down to Michigan. Now we've got a loop within Canton, Ford, Canton Center, Michigan Avenue. And that's tied into the urban highway system. So I think there's a real opportunity there and we've been talking with MDOT about that already. We would also have to work through Wayne County, which is kind of another issue that we'll have to address over time. Because Canton Center's under the county jurisdiction. Kristin mentioned that we're already, you know, working on pursuing companies to try to come to, to Canton and work on, you know, things associated with this industry. We're going to educate, communicate and educate our residents. Oakland County thought that was an excellent step and thought that we were probably one of the first communities in the state that is actually doing anything on this at this point. While they've made a lot of progress at a county level, there's been few communities that are actually doing what we're doing. So they thought that that was a, a real admirable, admirable goal for us. We'll continue to monitor the connected and autonomous vehicles developments. Definitely going to stay on Oakland County and try and learn from what they're going through. And look to explore additional partnerships through the American Center for Mobility and the M-City site in Ann Arbor. So what I've got in closing is just a couple of things that I wanted to show you real quick. So three, a little over three years ago, the Oakland County Road Commission worked with the City of Novi and they installed, I think it was 30 of these units in, in the City of Novi. This is what the dedicated short-range communication unit looks like. This is the old one. This is the one, this thing is pretty large. As you can see, this is mounted up pretty high above the traffic signals here at Novi Road. This is pretty large thing is, you know, I would guess the size of a toaster oven or bigger. The, the units that are out there today are certainly much smaller, but it just gives you an appreciation of the type of equipment that you're going to see out there on the, on the urban freeway system and maybe on some of our mile roads in the coming future. And the other thing that I had... So just to have some fun, because we're all about fun. We, oh, that's not good. We did a little survey in-house. We received a copy of, of an external survey that was done by, by an automotive group in 2016, which surveyed a few things about age and then asked for four questions. And we just sent it out internally to our 360-some full-time employees. And of those, 50% responded, which was about six times as many as I thought would respond to this. I'm going to call it statistically significant. But what, so that, that first question was just on age. And it just showed a, a spread, roughly equal spread of, of baby boomers. The swing generation, only a few individuals responded from there. Some millennials and Generation X were all roughly 1/3 each. But this question of, you know, how many vehicles does your household presently use? What's interesting is if you add the light blue and the yellow slice of the pie here, it totals about 87% almost of the, of the total respondents. So that basically means that, you know, 87% of the individuals have two or more vehicles in their households. That's going to change, absolutely. But the real crux of the, the survey are in, is in this graph. I apologize if it's a little bit small. But what this graph shows is, asks four questions. The first question is, would I ride in a self-driving vehicle and would I purchase one? And in our case, 22% of our staff said yes, they would do that. So that's this green slice right here. The national average in the survey was 33%, but I would note that that was about a year ago, this survey. The second question was, I would not ride in a self-driving vehicle and I would not purchase one. So 28% of the individuals, sorry, 34% of our individuals surveyed had indicated that would be their response. Nationally, the number was 28%. So it might reflect a little bit of a bias to southeast Michigan and how much we love our vehicles.
And age.
But maybe age, I don't know.
I was going to say age.
And then the, the yellow slice here says, I would drive in a self-driving vehicle, but I would not purchase one. And in our case, 13% of the people thought that was the way they would respond to that question, 24% nationally. And then the last slice, I don't know yet. That was almost 31% of the individuals. When this was asked nationally, it was 15%. So just some statistics for fun on how our staff answered a similar survey that was asked nationally about a year ago on these, these very same questions. So I think of that.
Would be accepted to open up questions? What I'd like to do is, is go to the public first, the audience. Is there any questions or comments anybody would like to make regarding the presentation?
Additionally, if you make the comments from the audience, nobody will be able to hear you who are participating from home or watching this discussion, so...
Yes, we could, please come to the podium and not required, but if you give us name and address, then please. Greg, if you'd like to. Well, it's kind of work from the back forward.
Name and address and all that? Okay. Greg Green, 468-90 Creek Spin Drive, Canton. I'm very excited about this idea of autonomous vehicles. I happen to be in the group that would ride in one, would buy one. But I'm older, I'm, I'm ready for this. I'm, you know, I, I can relinquish the steering wheel and all that kind of stuff and have, as, as long as I feel confident. And I think that's really what, what it gets down to is confidence. If you were to ask people today and 10 years ago, would you give your credit card information online to buy something? You would have two totally different results. And a lot of that has to do with the absence of fear of the unknown and, you know, confident that things are going to go well. So I think that those would take care of themselves. My question is relating to speeding up of our knowledge and basically presenting a win-win scenario between Canton and the CAV technology companies. I think we have perfect test tracks, two different types of test tracks in Ford Road and Michigan Avenue that would be useful for real-time, real-life technology, information, technological information and gaining knowledge. And would personally like to see us take a proactive role and actually hook up with companies and say, hey, we want you to use this segment of our busiest intersections, our busiest streets. And we will help you, we will partner. I don't know what that would entail, but we will work with you. And thank you very much for enlightening me. Of all the years that I've served on the DDA, I was unaware that that extra conduit had been installed when we buried the cables. I mean, we went through a lot to get the, the cables buried. And I guess my thanks go to Manik and Smith for the engineering that, that took place on that. So that's, that's good to know that we were proactive on, on something like that. But anyway, that's, that's, I guess my question is, is there a possibility of us being proactively looking to connect, direct connect with those technology companies while also still learning about what they're doing out in Oakland, Oakland County? That's, you know, it's always, always a good thing to stay on top of that. But I would like to see us be proactive on our own and just become, you know, since we're so close, I think that would suit us in a win-win scenario of all the things that Kristin talked about in terms of the, the companies feeling that, hey, let's, let's open up a shop here on Michigan Avenue and use those test tracks. And then obviously people want to live where they work, so obviously people would want to live here. I think it's a win-win all the way around. So that's, that's basically my question is, is there, do you see a possibility of us being proactive like that and actually establishing, not waiting for something to happen, but actually making something happen?
I think, you know, there's a couple of things. One, you know, what we've done to date is we've, you know, put our, our leaders in Washington, you know, on notice that we have some interest in maybe advancing some of this technology for the Ford Road Tiger Grant that we've made application for. So that they know that there's a, an additional opportunity beyond just fixing the issues with, with Ford Road by enlisting this kind of technology. But, but really, I think the, the key to, to your question, Greg, would be that we need to work with MDOT on it. MDOT owns that right-of-way, MDOT owns, you know, all the traffic signal infrastructure. What we actually own are the conduits in between. So, you know, I think there is a natural partnership there. And that's something that definitely...
Yeah, that goes without saying that we'd have to, to, you know, but we've already established that, that connection with all of the various projects that we've had. And their, their constant look at Ford Road in terms of improvements, although, you know, we haven't gone, gone as, as fast forward as we'd like on Ford Road, maybe that would help spur some of that impetus as well. Just, it's just an idea. Thank you.
Trade shows in March? What specifically, do you have a name with that?
I do, it's called Connected Car Detroit and it's on March 13th at the Henry Hotel. Looks pretty interesting, 300-plus experts on the technologies and trends shaping the evolution of the connected car. There's panel discussions. One, one I really thought was, it was specifically about how, how it's affecting communities. And the other one is called AutoSense, S-E-N-S, I'm thinking it's supposed to be Sense. And that is in May at the Michigan Science Center.
So at these events, Kristin will be in, at the, attending the events and aggressively pursuing and meeting people for opportunities, presenting Canton as a great place to be, come set up shop, how can we help you? As we do with all other economic development efforts. So there's a direct tie in there as well. Additional comments, questions from the back? Please.
Bob Parker, 6806 Weathersfield, Canton. I recently read an article from the CEO of Fiat Chrysler. And he had stated he felt within 10 years, 45% of our vehicles would be electric. So my thought, and just to throw an idea out, if we were able to put charging stations on our public property, it would kind of show Canton as being very progressive in looking for that technology and kind of a welcome, hey, come and bring your technology because we, we already have it at our public sites. And also I, I look at the, the Michigan Avenue corridor and say, you know, Lyft or, or some of these share rights, those type of opportunities. Again, I think they see that as, as communities that could provide, charging stations provide help in that way. But I just found it interesting that here the CEO of Fiat Chrysler thinks within 10 years, 45 to 50% will be electric vehicles. And I also know the GM believes the same thing. So just a thought.
Have, we have given some thought to, you know, if the township was going to cite some kind of a charging station down the road or have a private entity come in and use our property for that purpose at the Canton Softball Center or at the summit would be definitely a couple, you know, excellent locations where, you know, vehicles are maybe not parked all day long, but they're there for, you know, maybe two, three or four.
Oh, and I think if we get the press to kind of say, hey, we're welcoming her, that would be a real plus.
Also heard, although I won't go on, but also heard some interesting statements from the same FCA CEO this morning on the radio, so, about his predictions on, on autonomous vehicles. So interesting.
Mr. Bulba, questions? Please.
Name's Matt Grissius, I live at Warren and Lilly Road. And I just had a couple of questions. First off, I'd like to say awesome job. There was 100 people there with, you needed a professional facilitator to get all that information and organize and put this stuff together. So thank you so much. It was very, very well done. The first question is on page two, you mentioned that you learned that our priorities may not be aligned with those who attended. Who is our and what were, what are the priorities?
Sorry, those were the four questions that in advance of the session, we worked with the facilitator in terms of trying to get answers to. with the facilitator in terms of trying to get answers to, and I think in short, we had four boards up in the room, and the least number of comments were put on the three main questions, and the one that was miscellaneous had, had pretty much everything.
Yeah.
So didn't quite exactly get the answers that we were looking for, but it was, we still got a lot of good input.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Good. I was just curious as to what, what you meant by that. I'm a little too literal sometimes, so. Then on page five, talks about the budget for connectivity. Things don't happen in a big bang. How do we plan and put together and determine what phases are needed? Because it's not going to happen overnight. I mean, have you guys, is that for the future? Is that, is the technology committee going to be reconvened to help with that?
Well, I guess, you know, in terms of budgeting, it's a matter of, A, if you think about, you know, the couple of examples that I gave of Ford Road and Canton Center Roads, one, would MDOT embrace, you know, doing Ford Road as a corridor? And if so, then comes with that, who's going to pay? And then what comes with that is, how do we budget for what our share would be? And for the most part, you know, we can, that's a pretty task, pretty easy task for, for us to undertake. It comes down to, you know, the board's, board's will to use general fund dollars to fund this sort of thing.
And budget for training of public safety and for me to go to Germany and China. I'm just kidding. I can't, I can't.
That might be, that might be well-used.
It might be.
Yeah, so I guess what I envision in terms of what we've already given some thought to is MDOT's project along Michigan Avenue being probably Phase One, potentially Ford Road being a Phase Two, and then Canton Center, working with Wayne County, which, you know, very frankly, will have its challenges, being like a Phase Three. So that, that's what I envision, you know, at this point in time, if, if something was to happen in a, in a project-like sense.
And what comment about your connectivity? You mentioned the fiber, which might be great, but Snyder has signed some deals for ACM sponsors, AT&amp;T and Cisco. People are using 5G now instead of pulling fiber. So there's a lot of places that don't have the infrastructure, and they're not going to pull it. So why don't we approach AT&amp;T and Cisco and say, hey, why can't we piggyback off some of the work you guys are doing with Governor Snyder? You know, just a suggestion there. And the last item, the last question was, is there a repository or where will the info that you share with the, the public or technology committee reside? Or where can we find out more on what the direction is, what the budget, how we can help as citizens to sort of pitch in and?
That's a good question. Right now, we, right now, we just compiled all this, sent it out to the committee. I'm not sure about meetings as, I would think we would have them as, as we get new information, as new, new technologies emerging, as new opportunities arise for Canton. I would imagine we have, we reconvene. And I, we can have a, I mean, do you have any suggestions? Do you want a Facebook page for the technology committee? We can have, we can, we can have, we can have a page on the Canton website that I can post articles that I come across. I can post the trade show information that I'm finding.
I'd like to help, so it would be nice to sort of figure out what you guys have. Nobody wants to duplicate. We want to learn what you guys are learning and what you need, and then sort of contribute. There was 100 people in that room that day, and everybody was ready to grab a shovel and start digging a hole. You know?
We just don't know where those holes need to be dug yet, or if they need to be dug, and which kind of shovel we're going to use.
That's the point.
Right.
That's exactly the point.
Right.
So there was 100 volunteers, and we don't know where to direct that energy, so. I don't have any suggestions right now. It'd be a great thing to think about, but I'd like to be on that list and continue getting the updates. So thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Darrell, it's unusual, but do you have any questions? Save your phone call tomorrow, maybe, if you have any. Very good, sir. Board questions, comments? Summer?
I don't have any questions. Actually, I was writing down questions, but Tim answered all of my questions while he was talking. I do want to say how exciting I think all of this is. I read an article the other day about GM producing a car with no steering wheel and no pedals, and I was like, I can't wait to get that car because I hate driving. And I do like that some of the items that you identified to work on seem to fit into the board's strategic plan, so I appreciate that, and I can't wait to see where this goes. I did, just really quickly, I did want to ask, was there any attempt to talk to some of the car manufacturers that are in town for the auto show?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay. Thank you.
That's kind of saving you for the end.
I know. You're like, I saw her writing.
Yeah, Michael, it doesn't matter in the order. John, any comments, questions? Seeing done, Michael?
You want me to get in a car?
Here we go.
He's in the backseat.
Nobody's in there but me. There's no pedals, there's no wheels.
It's an age thing.
And drive from here to Detroit. Is that what you want me to do? I love you, but it ain't going to happen.
It's going to be a wonderful thing.
And this is going to, you think in 10 years, this technology is going to be, well, you've been to the point where it's actually going to happen.
Yep. But, you know, what I'm hearing and reading is that predictions that we heard a year ago are probably being accelerated, not slowed down. So I think, you know, Ford, and I guess maybe Ann Marie Kenner can't talk about this, but, you know, I was, I heard a year ago Ford was talking 2021. You know, I'm reading now Ford's talking 2020. So, you know, I think within 18 months to two years, you know, this stuff's going to be real, and the, Matt Gibbs from Oakland County, he feels very strongly that this is going to happen a lot faster than any of us are ready for it to happen in the municipal government field.
Well, and they're.
The other thing I was thinking about is the, you know, part of the road tax to pay for our roads, that's a joke, comes with a gasoline tax. No gasoline, no tax, no roads.
Right. Right. It's one of the reasons that they made the registration fees higher on electric vehicles.
Yep. Which isn't fair. Yeah, the funding, the funding's uncertain. It's, it's definitely an uncertain time. You know, the, the reality is, you know, and I'm, I'm one of them, I like to keep my vehicles for a long time because I drive them a lot. And, and, you know, if, it'll take 10 years at least to cycle through once, once the last one is, once the last conventional vehicle is sold and all you can buy is some electric or other powered, connected and autonomous vehicles, it's going to take at least 10 years from that point.
Yeah.
So it's probably going to take 20 or 25 years to cycle through to a point where everything on the vehicle, everything on the road is, is one of these driverless vehicles.
You want me to get in a car? Okey-dokey. Sound like a great idea.
Just to talk to John, just right now, in State of Michigan, '75, '94, we were doing tuning with Seminole trucks. And what it was tuning is, the guy that's in car is controlling the two trucks behind, and that testing is being done in State of Michigan, and so right now. So it was something three years ago, it would be 10 years out. So, yeah, it's coming fast, and that's what we like.
So I think it boils down to, it's not if anymore. It's going to be the when question, and all we can do as a community is pay attention to what's happening in the environment around us and hopefully not have to be reactive all the time and be proactive when and where we can. And there may have, there was going to be some budget requirements set aside, so we can help prep, but, Michael?
I have a question. The additional lane that was added to 23 going north and south, they put a lot of infrastructure. I don't know how familiar, because it's not in Canton, I don't know how familiar you are with it, Tim, but is that somehow set up? Because it looks like the, the additional lane is a designated shoulder that goes on during peak traffic hours off, outside of peak traffic hours. Is there a CAV component to the infrastructure that they put in there?
There is, yeah. That's kind of completing the loop, the big loop that, I'm not sure what they call it, but those that are kind of working on those projects talk about this loop from Brighton to Ann Arbor, Ann Arbor over towards Metro Airport, then Metro Airport, back up into Farmington Hills, Novi, and then 96 back out to Brighton. So that's the big loop, and then they're building other spurs off of that loop, and then there's another corridor in Oakland County. I forget which highway it's on now, but there's a smaller, shorter corridor in Oakland. Yes, it was put in when they did the reconstruct.
Okay. Because I was, I had the luxury of attending the SEMCO conference, and so I saw the presentation that Tim put on, which was great, the one from CAR, the, the industry group, and then the one from Oakland County. Very educational, and it's interesting because you see the survey of people who say, there's no way I'll ever do this, and, and I think it was a gentleman from Oakland County who did, who was phenomenal, by the way, who did the presentation, and he showed a beautiful photo of one lane that was a designated connected and autonomous lane, and traffic was moving at an even pace because it has to, they're computers, right, that are connected with each other, and the other two lanes are free-flowing lanes and they're gridlocked. And he says, it's very easy today, when this is a concept that you're not thinking about, to say, this is something I would never engage in, but when you watch and curse as these other vehicles are sailing past you and you're stuck in rush hour traffic and you can't advance forward, the economics of that decision begin to change a little bit as, as our realities change. And so I thought that was an interesting statement, an interesting visual, because, yeah, so that was fascinating. I, yeah, I'm excited about it. I mean, the interesting, the notion of safety is interesting notion as well, because people get afraid of flying, people get afraid of a lot of things, but they, what do we, what do we, we tell people the most dangerous part of your trip in any given moment is that first couple of miles away from your home. And I also think about how we refer to, as the roads get slicker, all I hear the sirens every day, you know? We call them accidents, but for all intents and purposes, they're not true accidents, they're miscalculations, right? I mean, we aren't calculating our speeds correctly, we aren't calculating the road condition correctly. Our brains are computers, and we make errors, and they result in us crashing our cars into other people's cars. And it's just, it's, it's an interesting notion that more powerful computers, provided they have all of the variables, will actually result in a significant amount of more safety and less, quote, accidents.
Yeah, most of the statistics are, are suggesting up to 80% reduction in, in crashes.
Yeah. But giving up control, which is not, it's an emotional thing. It's a hard thing to do, I think philosophically and literally. But anyway, I know that Plymouth Township and Northville Township had spent a great deal of time trying to institute a high-tech corridor or bring economic development to that area, the jobs of tomorrow, whatever they want to call it. What, and I know that like for Michigan Avenue's purposes, we had changed the future land use map and the zoning to try to move parcels into light industrial research, try to allow basically the conditions that would create that, and again, it's going to be private industry that will drive that, but is there anything you know of that other municipalities or town, you know, are doing to try to bring in like tech incubators or the, or the industry that will be supporting, will be supporting this industry?
Well, there's, there's definitely a few things that Wayne County is working on with respect to what was previously the Eritropolis project, kind of either side of E-course Road, if you will, between Willow Run Airport and Metro Airport. So they've been kind of working that economic development side of it, and I think from what we've heard, they're, you know, trying to steer some of these companies there. You're competing, that is competing with, you know, kind of raw industrial property in Canton Township and elsewhere, and it's competing with businesses wanting to be at the American Center for Mobility site and any incentives that there might be for being on that physical site.
And that site is designed to house many, many of those companies, which we did not know previously, that they are, a lot of them are going to live there.
We learned upon touring that they are setting up to have vendors and suppliers inside the fence, which makes sense for.
It does.
Security reasons, development reasons.
But we're just outside the fence.
Yeah, so we're going to see some residuals from, and then where those folks are going to want to live as well. Canton, I think, is going to be highly desirable.
Yeah.
Yeah. The other, okay, so I'm trying to think of, one of the other things that they kind of talked about, and one of the reasons I think Oakland County had prioritized doing the work they did so early was because it looked like economic regions were kind of competing with each other for who were, who were going to be the emerging region for this technology, much like we have the auto industry, like who's going to be doing this? Is it going to be Silicon Valley? Is it going to be Atlanta, Boston? Is it going to be the United States? So I think I, I'm really appreciative that Oakland County got really aggressive early on, and I think it's great, and a testament to the new board, to municipal services, you know, everybody here that were, that were doing this work now, because to Supervisor Williams' point, I mean, the, the future is coming, right? We're all, we're all going to get there, and are the jobs and the people going to be here, or are they going to be somewhere else? And I, for one, would like to see them.
In Canton.
Would like to see them in Canton.
Yeah.
So I would chale, I wonder out loud about municipalities, like cities that actually own their own infrastructure, they're going to be buying these, you know, so I wonder about the proprietary, you know, having uniformity in the systems that are used, because Wayne County is, you know, 43 municipalities, right? It's going to take a concerted regional effort and state effort to make sure that the same degree, you know, software, hardware, it all works as you, because, right, I don't just drive in Canton, you know? My car doesn't really typically care which municipality I'm in, so that kind of, it's all got to communicate with itself as you, that's a huge endeavor. It's just a statement to the world, I guess, so.
It's true, though, we were just, I, somebody who was on the technology committee emailed us today. He was just at the Consumer Electronics Show in Vegas, and he came across a, essentially one of the short-range communicat, sensors. It's just some company who has developed these, and I, he made it sound like Las Vegas is using those. And so I sent it to Tim, and I'm like, he said, well, MDOT's using this other stuff. So, so you're right. Are all these things going to be talking to each other? Are they going to be speaking the same language?
They have to.
They have to, right? So I don't, I don't, it's, it boggles my mind.
Well, there's got to be, there's got to be, I mean, these devices are going to be communicating with each other, so what about interference and things like that? If we looked at our building code and our sign ordinances and all that stuff to make sure that our ordinances are, I mean, that, to me, seems like a practical thing we can do to make sure that as we develop naturally and organically, that that's not going to conflict with, you know, the fact that information's going to be whizzing around constantly.
That's why we have to pay attention, understand the evolution, revolution of the evolution.
Yeah. All right, well, that's it.
Ann Marie?
Thank you. Thanks. You guys did a great job, and thanks for holding the meeting, and, and a lot of people are interested in, like Matt said, you know, getting the information. And just to let you know, there are electric chargers at AAA and IKEA right now that the public can use, so that's if anybody wants to go play with those. Funding, I just want to talk about that for a second. So Volkswagen, I'm sure many have heard about Dieselgate. They owe the states lots of money based on what they've done, you know, sending on emissions. Michigan gets $65 million of that. 65, that $65 million is available to anybody. Sixty-five, that $65 million is available to anybody, any community, any school district, any county in the state. 15% of that money is $9 million, which can be used totally on electrical vehicle infrastructure. You can, if you, I'm working on this in my day job across the country. So this can be used to buy mini-transit buses, it can be used for electric vehicle chargers. There are cities that are doing this. I can send you examples of those cities, models. So this is going to be fully paid for by these funds. I sent you actually the links a couple of weeks ago.
I actually spoke to the person at DEQ, and she said the funding would be, they should have the funding available by the fall of 2018.
Yes, and you want to put in an RFP, because everyone's going to be asking for it. I'm surprised Michigan hasn't been aggressive as other states with pushing that down to the communities. They had a couple of webinars on it, but they've been getting dribbles and drabs, and I see other states are going on gangbusters.
Yeah, they don't, they don't have their program together yet. They've had kind of the public input, and they have a direction, but they haven't finalized it yet. So at least that's what I was told, either Thursday or Friday last week I did call DEQ and ask.
That's good. And Representative Pegg, and I know what she's working on, she's pushing to try to get some of that over here also. But we can put it, you can put in for certain projects for that. So you can put in for a mini-transit bus and mini, you know, electrical infrastructure to support that. And that wouldn't be tearing up roads or anything, it's just a bus. So you can use those funds for that. And if you want, there's the Volkswagen Clearinghouse, you can see, I can send you some of the other projects. You can see how they're being written up for those funds, which would help us. Why start from scratch, you know? For economic development, Jim Costeva, rather than, I mean, trade shows are great, and some of these shows that are here. But Jim Costeva had mentioned several times of us working with some of the Spark companies that are coming out. He said, basically, they're starting, you know, Spark has all these startups. He said, like, one, he had mentioned it when we went out to M-City. Like, one in every 25 days, a new startup. He said he could facilitate some meetings with those companies to see if he can start pulling them to Canton, you know, maybe up inside down Michigan Avenue. So maybe pushing Jim to set that up with us. Some of the projects, let me see, oh, the county push. So I understand that Oakland County is doing what they're doing, because they're, they basically have a bigger planning group than we do in Wayne County. I mean, wasn't our planning group, the Wayne County Planning Group, basically diminished down to nothing with budget cuts?
Yeah, they don't have a group.
Right, right. And Oakland County does, so they can plan things like this, unlike Wayne County. Is there any way we can, anything in the future where we can push Wayne County to expand that planning group again? Because we're missing out on a lot because of it.
Yeah, they really have to create it, and they have to, you know, assign people to work on this, which, which, other than, I think, one individual in their economic development area, I don't know that they've got anybody working on the infrastructure side of it anyways.
Yeah, I don't know. Because I know Detroit has a corridor, it's like a little street, a test street. And, you know, they're doing it on their own, but, you know, 43 communities should be working together. And I don't know how, we have to push Wayne County to do that somehow. So would it be best for companies, huge companies, to go to Wayne County to push this work rather than the communities, because Wayne County really has to tie us together?
Yeah, and most of the major roads through, even, you know, the cities located in Wayne County are owned and operated by the county. So whether you're a township or a city, most of the major roads through your communities are county roads.
These, this map that you gave us for these traffic signals, you know, we know that from the Planning Commission that any new traffic signals that are going in have to have this capability to speak, you know, the smart capability, basically. Are they looking at tying that in with M-City through Detroit?
Yes.
And what year is that, do you think, they said?
The Michigan Avenue project, let me just take a look at my notes, because I've got that. The Michigan Avenue project is designed in 2019 and construction in 2020. The I-275 project is already designed and is going to be bid, sorry, is already designed and being bid, and is going to be awarded February the 6th. So that's going to happen this year.
Okay.
That's a redo of the existing equipment that's already on I-275. And if you look, actually, what you can do is, if you look just off into the Boulevard side, northbound and southbound, and there's a few units in the center, but most of this equipment's on the, kind of on the right or left Boulevard as you're going up and down the highway, you can see the equipment. It's mounted up on poles, and there's big cabinets at the base of those poles. So that's what most, excuse me, most of that equipment is that you see.
No, but, I mean, we are, this is moving like crazy. It really, really is. And other states are going quicker than us, but there's no reason we can't start planning on it, you know, and bring some of those companies here. Because like you said, Kristen, this, you know, some of these builders want to put these big buildings up, but if we can fill them with smart initiatives, research people, that would really help us. And I know a lot of the big companies are working with that. So the Smart City Challenge happened two years ago, and they awarded, I think, well, Columbus is the closest city to us, and they're really, we're working gangbusters with them. But there's no reason we couldn't start, you know, figuring out how to bring some of those companies here. But CES was huge with us this year, hu, did, did your, no, he didn't go this year? Oh, okay. But no, thank you very much. And I think if we have a repository, even if a lot of the people who are on the Technology Committee, because they work for GM and some of the suppliers and Ford, they could even put, you know, things that are happening, which we could, you know, ear the ground on.
They can also email me directly, like the one guy just did today with the, from, that he saw, the stuff that he saw at CES. That's always appreciated, too, because the more information you have, right?
Right. Right, but yeah, even in working with Spark, you know, if we could get from Jim Costeva some of these companies that he's saying he could help us with, that would help.
Yeah, I did meet with him a month or two ago, so we're...
Okay, great, well, thank you.
Yep.
Michael?
I have another question for Director Foss. That portion of 275, as far as repave that or the actual road work, that's on MDOT's schedule, correct? Is it for 2019 or 2020, or?
It is. So there's two parts. There's the actual road, there's some asphalt pavement rehabilitation work that they're doing, which is, I believe, a separate contract from this communications equipment contract.
Okay, so it won't, it wouldn't have, like, the designated lane or the, it would not be, look like, okay. I was just curious if that was what the end result would look like.
No, this is just an upgrade of the existing kind of four, five-year-old equipment that's already out there on 275.
Oh, I heard that one more. Part of it, the suggestion about using Waze traffic, you know, for, to monitor the traffic through Canton was to, in the future, look at some kind of a planning dashboard. Like, right now, the Planning Commission, when we get a developer coming in, he wants to build something. We look at the traffic around there, but we really don't understand how it affects the traffic down the road. And having a planning dashboard, if you're tracking this, you can basically say, okay, I'm going to put in this development, and this is the traffic, so we should put a lane here. But hey, look at what happens down here in Ford and Hagerty, even though the development's at Ford and Beck, look what happens at Ford and Hagerty because of the traffic flows. So something like that would assist with something like that. Are you seeing any kind of software like that on the shelf?
Yeah, so not, not software per se, but what MDOT is doing is, they issued a request for proposals from engineering companies to develop a new dynamic traffic model for the region. That's all of southeast Michigan, it's a huge project. But that model is going to focus more just on the freeway system, and then some major corridors like Michigan, like Ford Road potentially. But it wouldn't get down to the level where they would be doing, say, like Warren and Lilly. One of the individuals that, you know, I live there. So it's not going to include those signals, but it would include the signals along major corridors and along the freeway systems, generally kind of at the interchanges. And that's a two-to-three-year project that MDOT's going to award. So they're working with SEMCO on that, and we're very much in tune with kind of where they're at on their, on that project. And we've told them that if they wanted to expand that into doing local-level analysis, that we'd like to see Canton as a testbed.
Good, thank you. When you did your presentation, I'm just wondering, what kind of questions and answers did you get at SEMCO? Did you get a lot of questions, or?
No, not too much. Not too much, really.
Just oohs and ahs?
There were some pretty, yeah, the people that attended that are, were very well-schooled, I'd say, generally in this industry already. But, you know, I just had a few comments afterwards about, well, you know, we really hadn't thought about even talking to the community about that yet. So that was the type of kind of comment that we had
Which they should.
From a few communities that were in attendance. It was mostly, I'd say, technical people that were there, not really a lot of communities.
And that brings us to a conclusion. Any additional board comments, questions?
You want me to get in that car with nobody in it?
John, you know what? Actually, autonomous vehicles are driving around, you don't know that, but...
I don't want to know it. I think I ran into one the other day, or ran into me.
I'd like to call for a motion to close.
So moved.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, state aye. Aye? Good evening, thank you, folks.
Thank you.